July 20th meeting of the regular meeting of the county planning commission to order. Before we do anything else, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome our newest member, Mr. Atkins, representing the Jackson district. And we also have a new member from Pima district who is out there unable to make it. Welcome. I'm sure I speak for all of us, and I'd say we look forward to working with you and getting to know you better through this process. I would also note that unchanged likes meeting because Mr. Whitson is still overseas and unable to join us. So why don't, with that, let the record note that the other five commissioners are all here, and we're going to do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a pretty light agenda this evening, but we need to adopt it nonetheless. So could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Can I, I would like to just mention, if we could, an addition about changing the definition of kennel, because I'm worried that's going to come up pretty soon. Or, I don't know what the procedure.
We can certainly get it on the, we can, we can talk back. I guess if you want to propose or move that we add that to agenda for as a discussion item, that might be the right mechanism for doing that. Is, does someone second?
Sure.
All right, all in favor? All right, so we'll put that in here. Just put that in. Why don't we do that in the, yeah. Any other suggestions for the agenda? Do you have a motion to, do you still move to approve it as modified?
I think we just did that, didn't we? We just turned that.
We just ended it.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, all right. Second, second, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. And we do not have, I believe, so we can move right on from that. And I believe we have two public hearings with respect to the agricultural and forest all districts. Ms. Summers, would you please?
Sure. The, the Krepsor and the Haskell agricultural districts were created back in 1981. Over the years, they have been renewed for 2010 years. Tonight, the agricultural district committee met, they reviewed the applications for the districts, the districts have basically stayed the same, and they recommended approval of both districts.
Thank you. And since this is a public hearing, before I open the public hearing for these applications, just let me note for the record that we will have a separate public comment period for other types of public comment, not related to these districts. So why don't I, you think we'd be okay to open it together? Yeah. So I'm going to hereby open the public hearing for both of the Krepsor Agricultural and Forest All Districts and the Haskell. Anyone like to speak on these matters? Hearing done, I will close the hearing on these districts. Is there any discussion? Anybody have anything to say on the commission? If there's no comment, I would entertain a motion. I believe it is incumbent on us to recommend their removal. Is that our, is our mission here, that is our responsibility?
I recommend the renewal of the agricultural districts for the Krepsor Agricultural District and Forest District as well as the, the Haskell Agricultural and Forest District.
So if I could just clarify, I believe the motion would be that we recommend approval because these go to.
The board's to provide.
We have a motion, or a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Well, as promised, this is the opportunity for a general public comment, hopefully related to matters on the planning commission. But we don't have a microphone tonight, but if you would be so kind, appreciate it, if you'd like to speak, that you provide your name and your district or area where you live. With that, I will open the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Yes?
Karen Mottler, Pima district. I'd just like to say that you all have added a real asset to the planning commission in Tommy Atkins. His family has been here for more than 250 years. So he knows the land, he knows the people, and he will be a real asset. So congratulations to Tommy and you all for.
Thank you, Karen, thank you. Anyone else care, Steve?
Ron McCall, Jackson district. One of the sign ordinance, I believe, is on the agenda this evening, and I wanted to speak to you about the article seven of the public art. I've been here before on this. The first thing I want to do is just go through some portions of the, of the article as it's written. I'll start out with intent is that, it starts on, is the intent of this article, regulate the duration, location, and manner of this public art. I think it changed, regulate the sentence, the way I read this. And then, public art in order to preserve aesthetic appeal. How do we define aesthetic appeal? That's a very vague, very vague term, and in something like this, with art, most of you may realize is that it's a very controversial term when it comes to regulating. And it also, under the First Amendment, it is addressed, and basically, the way it's addressed is as far as time, place, and manner. And you do have a wording in here, it's different wording, but it's, it's in here, it's duration, location, and manner. But anyhow, what you're looking at doing is trying to regulate public art. Finding that constitutes a well, or, okay, going down just a couple lines here, to protect the safety of drivers and pedestrians from undue distractions. What is undue distractions? I mean, art, yes, art does, you know, attract your attention. That's, that's what it's meant to do. And so how do you place the term undue on, on this and then apply it to someone who is perhaps making an application? Going down a little farther, let's see here, to, in the fact that public art, a lot of times, has to do with public art in public spaces. But it says right in here that it has to place on private murals and sculptures for public display that promote or enhance the character of the county. So basically, you're, in my understanding, was this, this is going to end up falling on the zoning administrator, who's going to have to sit there and decide whether, someone's making an application and whether this is enhancing the character of the county. I mean, there, there are a lot of views, which we're all aware of, as what is the character of the county. Going to part three of intent, to prevent visual expression that may be offensive. How, how do you make that determination? Is it like, well, the neighbor complained because they don't like it, so is that offensive? Or is it from an obscene standpoint, offensive? Yes, it's obscene, there is other law and case law or whatever that you can deal with, and the communities can make that different age. But it's, there again, this is a very vague term, and, and this is just in the first paragraph. And then going down into your definitions, public art, any original item expressed in creative, creative skill or imagination in a visual form such as paintings, sculpture, which is intended to view by aesthetic nature and influence of the public area, or areas that are visible from the public realm. So what's this saying? I read this, it's saying, maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but this is that, on my property, if I choose to place a art, piece of art in the yard, that is in, in the front yard, that is in the public realm. So my advice is going to see it. This, I think you're, you're going over in the area of First Amendment as far as freedom of expression. Okay, going down to, when you get to 170 dash 43, public art, public art permit shall be required. So it, literally, I go to, you know, because public art, art is what it is. You can go to the Home Depot and buy public art. So if I go to the Home Depot, I can buy a metal swan or something like that to put in my yard, and it's visible from the road, according to what I'm reading here, I got to get a permit. I, I, I think we're going way, way over the line, and, and there's, there's no, there's no differentiation on size or anything in here, it's just a term, public art. So it's not, it's really not defined, and trying to find art, which I'm sure you all agree is not something that's easily possible. Under regulations, public art shall adhere to the following regulations, which I consider to serve censorship to be considered. Okay, on B, under public art, there again, public art shall not create an undue or distraction to drivers of moving vehicles. How do we define that? I mean, yes, if it's something that's really cool, people are going to, you know, they're going to ask for a look at it. If it's something that's really offensive, they're going to glance over and look at it. But, but how do you define that? And how do you, you know, say someone is violating that portion of the ordinance, and that what they have out there is causing undue distraction? C, an applicable sign and statement. Now, we issued permits for short-term rentals, special exemption permits, special use permits. We don't, my, I mean, they have to sign the application, but they don't have to sign a statement that says that agreeing to abide by the provisions of this article, including but not only to the provisions of regarding the removal. So you've got a problem here. Let's go down to G. Public art must not compromise the structural integrity of the surface to which it is applied or attached. So I would read that to mean that somehow the building official is going to have to become involved. So if you're going to put something up on, on the front of your house or whatever, he's going to have to come up and approve the way it was attached to the house. There again, and, and this is to do, due to weather conditions, vandalism, or age. It, it doesn't make any sense. I, public art shall be maintained and good repair, free from peeling paint or damage due to age, weather, vandalism, or the like. Public art, much of it, is designed to sort of deteriorate, particularly metal pieces. They're designed, you put them up there, and they're designed to rust, and as they rust, they, they tend to change, whatever. That's part of outdoor art, and, and it's designed into a lot of projects, and this thing is going to deteriorate in a certain way, but that's part of the art. So how, how do you, how does somebody make a determination of whether the, you know, the deterioration is appropriate or not appropriate? Coming down here to the end, non-conforming public art. This is the, public art existing prior to the adoption, adoption of the article shall not be considered vested and must meet the requirements of this article. You guys pass zoning things, DCA, orders. Grandfathering is always there. If it's there prior to the installation of the new ordinance or the change in the ordinance, it is grandfathered. You can't, you can't say in this situation, if you have this, you know, whatever it is in your yard, it's been there for 20 years or whatever, suddenly, no, you're going to have to get a permit, and if you don't get a permit, you're going to have to remove it. And going to the end, public removal, or removal of public. You don't meet the conditions, cause of removal of public art, a violation of this article, and if, if the article has to be removed, the individual is going to have to pay for the authority to come in and remove it. It's, you know, here are my questions. Why do we need this? Have there been problems? Are there any serious problems with public art in this county that would require us to turn around and put this into an ordinance? I, you know, I don't know of any, I know of one, and that's it. And by doing so, what are we going to gain? What's the gain in, in creating this restriction on people and on their home property, putting out something that they would like to sit on their front porch and look at, and yes, maybe somebody driving by can see it, but, you know, there's, there's no reason for it. And final thing is, in my dealing with this and speaking to people around the county or whatever, I haven't found anybody that's supported. Is it has not gotten a lot of press. Very, most of the people I talk to, they go, what? They want to do what? And, and I think once it gets out there, the people are going to be going, no, this is, you know, there's not a problem, there hasn't been a problem. Why, you know, why do we want to do this? And in fact, I think what we're going to end up doing is creating a problem, because in the end, the enforcement, because it's part of the zoning, is going to fall on the zoning administrator. So she becomes the art policeman. And if a person doesn't agree with that, then it will go as an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who will have to become the art board policeman or whatever, and then it can go to the circuit court, and if it gets to there, when you start looking at the ordinance that concerns to case law in regards to First Amendment, it's not going to apply. So why do we need to do it? And, and quite honestly, I think as a board, you can have the option to make a motion that you don't really feel that this is necessary, and that's the end of it. It doesn't even need to go to a public hearing. It's going to go to a public hearing if you want to put it into the code. But I think you, somebody can make the motion, somebody second it, vote on it, and go, no, we've got more important things to do, we've got a whole ordinance to deal with, so, thank you.
Thanks, thank you for that, and I'm not going to close the public comment, but I just want to say just.
You're opposing comments?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I just, but I want to address this, because I've actually had some calls about this, and it's getting attention. But I do want people to realize, part of the reason we haven't wordsmithed this is that we did just what you just described, and we, in a working session, have, at least on a tentative basis, obviously with a different configuration of the commission, recommended just what you described, to not address this in the sign ordinance. So I, I encourage people to stay with this, because obviously, it's still in the draft, but you won't see us wordsmithing those individual sections, because the, the tentative decision from the work session vote was that we weren't going to address it.
Your question. I'll just ask one question.
Please.
The work session vote?
It was a continuation of a, a regular meeting. It's, it's our working draft, it's not, you know, the reason the draft hasn't changed is we are working through it, we got, we had one session where we worked through all of the definitions, that was the, the product, the place that we had gotten to in our working, and it was in that context that there was really very little, if any, if any, that I can recall dissent from the view that we should leave alone.
Thank you. And that was publicly, that has not been.
Understood, and that's the.
No, it's worth keeping.
It is worth keeping that in mind, and it's not over, obviously. This draft was provided by the county attorney, so it is still in the, in the play and in the public domain, but just to maybe calibrate temperatures a little bit and, and make sure people know where, at least our current thinking is, that's what has been done so far. Now, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, madam, I hardly agree with anything you said. I'm totally right on. You can't be the art police. This is so dangerously close to suppression of freedom of expression. I, I served in front of the architectural review board some years ago with the worldly house, and I warned them that they were getting themselves into deep legal problems by making the demands that they did, and the town ended up costing $90,000. You're just giving people a club to butcher each other with. This is, I mean, if you want to give the lawyers around here a heyday, I mean, you know which ones I'm talking about. I mean, I don't have to name names, but you are going to be making a mess. You can't do this. This is not permissible. It's, it's completely beyond your purview. People have a right to express themselves on their, I wonder about my dear friend, I, only as a business level, James Shaw, anybody familiar with him? He's got the place right there on the corridor as you go to the dump, the transfer station. What are they going to haul him into court and make him get permits for all that stuff? You gotta love his exuberance. I mean, he's, that's, I mean, I wouldn't do that on my property, but I love the fact that he, that he is like that, and Brenda Van Ness, she's got burnt hocks of wood and, and globes and things along, and also, he's got to do his objective, they don't like burnt hocks of wood, driftwood or something, and so what, haul her into court? This is the craziest thing ever. Good luck. Please don't do it.
Thank you.
That's all.
K. Lee, you've got to stay to the end. You've got to stay to the end.
He said her name. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you, I didn't catch you, did you get your name and district?
My name's Phil Tickleman.
And you're from Hampton.
Hampton, this is my, I'm embarrassing that, but I love him anyway. He's, he's good for us.
Would anyone else like to speak?
John Capiola from the Hampton district. The last meeting, there was a proposal, or a piece of new regulation that's floating around about a regulation about allowing 10 cars into an event. In fact, you made, mentioned the fact that your barn has started to do well, and it's the summertime, and how many people that you have, and you wanted to change that from 10 to 25. And Mr. Whitson said that the home supervisors wanted to push this issue as the only club that could be used against the agro-terrorism industry. As you all know, I'm not involved in the agro-terrorism industry, so I'm not doing this for myself. However, there has been an application, a back and forth with the Little Washington winery over a narrow road. The history behind it is in 1974, when the lots were split up, there was a 30-foot right away that was put on the map, and the original developer built a road that's about 12 feet wide. The process is now coming around, listening to the planning commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Supervisors to correct this problem, which is to put what was supposed to be there, which is a 20-foot road, and with five feet of inside grass, recontouring one edge with the commission and the chain of the two homeowners that are the property, along with the power company moving a line that it turns out they put in the wrong place. They're off by almost 20 feet. I met with the manager of the power company, and he said, what are those little red flags for? I said, that's where your line is. He said, it's not supposed to be there. Really? And you're the representative from the power company, and you don't record, you know, it says volcanic electric on it? Well, you put them up. No, I didn't put them up. Call before you did, put them up. They were in the wrong place, so we need to fix all of this. And yet, trying to go through the process to get this done, the county seems to be against it. And yet, the county is saying that we need to pass an ordinance to make sure, I'm pretty close to the quote, is that we are, we are going to pass this new ordinance for health and safety of the citizens of the county, so that a fire truck can go in and a person can come out, and the fire trucks aren't running off the road. There are roads in this county, according to the VODs and the Board of Supervisors, that are less than 18 feet, and the VODs have said, we're not fixing them. So if you're worried about fire and safety at an event at your, your barn, as a, for instance, how come we're not worried about the roads that are less than that? They just, you just passed an ordinance stopping trucks, which was needed, down Benzo the Road, because Benzo the Road is narrow. We just build a pool up over there for somebody, and we put the parked truck out on the road to get the water out, because it's too narrow. Well, here we are with it on set of circumstances. You want to pass a regulation that's going to start here at the planning commission, go to the Board of Supervisors for its next round, that is going to restrict not just the wineries, but the barns and people's homes, because nowhere is in that regulation, does it say, there is an exception if we're having a wedding or an anniversary, a 50th anniversary. I'm going to have a birthday party in a month, four or five months, maybe as many as 200 people there. Are you telling, I'm 18 acres, so I'm not worried about parking out on the road, but you're telling me that I have to go get a permit, apply for a permit, so that I can have a birthday party at my home? That's, that's, the county should not be involved in that. And/or, if there is, there should be a thing where, you can have a birthday party, you're going to have a bunch of people, fun. Call the police department, call the fire department, and tell them, we're going to be out here, we're going to have people here, so you can be aware. When I knew something large in the county, like what are my machines, I called the police department, I told them I'm going to be over here, and could you come out here and, and sit on 522 with me for 20 minutes while I take it off the truck? So nobody gets hit. I broke down on 211, four houses away from my own. I called the sheriff's department. Not a problem, Mr. Cap, we'll come right out there, we'd rather sit there for 10 minutes than spend 10 hours writing reports as to why somebody came over the hill and ran into you. But you're making a regulation that, as Mr. Whitson said, would apply across all zones, not just the wineries. It's going to go residential, it's going to go for everything, and that's more like HOA stuff, just like I heard before about the, the artwork. That's HOA regulations. The whole bell, human cry that I hear coming out of this county all the time, and Mr. Henry was very eloquent in one of my hearings, in that this is supposed to be a county that encourages. encourages views and tourism and things like that. By calling out art and saying, this is ugly or we don't want it, you're trying to cleanse it, you're trying to HOA it, you're trying to be the, the art police. My wife has art, she has art hanging in the National Art Gallery. If somebody came and said, we can't have this, they'd have a problem on their hands because the National Art Gallery thinks that her art is beautiful and thousands and thousands of people see it every month, every week. But if I went home and I put it on display, I'm gonna get a permit? Maybe getting a permit for my business sign or something like that on the edge of my driveway, I'm all about, no problem. You're talking about distraction? Get rid of the sign that's out in front of the Amosville Firehouse, the big LED flashing. I don't ever drive past it day or night without looking at it. It draws your eye. Hence, in your regulation of your signage, that is a distraction. And I know distraction has nothing to do with it, even though the other distractions have something to do with it. But, and welcome to the chorus, but that's the kind of thing I agree with having a regulation on. You can't have signs that are distracting or oversized or don't fit into the county. Not art. That's it. Great.
Thank you.
Do that and then have to argue, holler nothing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? There may be. Anybody else? If not, I will hereby close the non-public comment period and we can move on to new business and we have one that we added.
Okay, and I'm happy to. So you may recall the kennel advocates we had. I mentioned, I don't remember what it was, but that's the BCA. There was a lot of discussion about the meaning of kennel and whether or not training dogs fit into the definition. I personally think it does under any commercial purpose or economic venture. There is a circuit court in Fauquier County that would be our jurisdiction that has held that that definition kennel does not include training dogs.
The same definition?
Yeah. They, we, they did.
In my class.
For the thought here, county definition. So it's my proposal that we change this, just to add a sentence about, you know, like after, let's see, or four animals in excess of five over one year in age in a pet shop or an animal shelter is defined herein, or, or training, grooming, or boarding when the animals are not kept overnight.
So that was an edited, uh, verbatim.
What do you think, Michelle? Cause we, we've been, you know, somebody fought smooth against this, the BCA.
Which has been settled.
It was withdrawn, but is that what you're gonna say?
Well, the case was settled.
I'm, yeah, but in my, I'm just worried.
Well, so there, the definition, we have a definition and we can change the definition and especially should, if it's been found deficient, but I don't, and so I, I, one of the things we're gonna get into in the old, in the old business is these, all these various reviews of our ordinance and one of the, and I don't wanna take us too far ahead, but one of the things I wanna talk about is how, what's the sentiment of the commission's, you know, thoughts on how to go about this? And it seems to me there's some pretty clear options. One would be to go by order of priority, one would be slot through the, you know, the ordinance section by section in, you know, from beginning to end, one would be to pick the sections that we're most sensitive to. So I do think we should spend some time on that. I, I don't know if you're proposing that we take a separate action.
No, no, I actually thought that's what, where they should appropriately.
When we, when we get into that. Well, I appreciate that particularly. I, I was not aware that there had been some challenge and some, some official court action on our definition, so thank you for making us aware of that. Anybody have anything else they wanna raise on this? If not, I think the plan will be that we will take that up in where it fits in the review of the ordinance. All good? All right. Thank you for that. Moving on to our old business, I guess we can talk about each of these in turn, maybe at least for Mr. Acton's benefit. I think we've been kind of watching as these various pieces have come in, but the three items that we now have, we have the Berkeley Group that did a diagnostic report where they've kind of gone through all of our ordinance and our comprehensive plan and identified areas of varying levels of weakness ranging from non-compliant with relevant state code to, you know, maybe not in keeping with the absolute best practices or something that could be improved upon from the standpoint of user friendliness, because I think everyone recognizes that our document is getting kind of long in the tooth and it's just been added on kind of over the years. So Berkeley Group has given us a pretty, very systematic review. We've, we've heard their presentation. We have not as a commission, the only action I believe we've taken was to generally agree that we need to start scheduling work sessions to go through this. I don't believe we have actually scheduled.
No. The Berkeley Group will be, I believe they will be here in person to present to the board supervisors, obviously the third, and it's from six to eight in the shrub.
On August the third?
Mm-hmm.
So they're presenting the same report. So basically, just again, to get, it's all on the same page. This study, this report was commissioned, they reported to us, we went through it, accepted it as their recommendation. There were some parts of it that we had already observed were kind of overtaken by events because it was changing things that we had already changed in another context, but beyond that, this Bobby has taken no other action as to how we're going to go about. And I would certainly maintain that we are in no obligation to accept all of those, or we, we've accepted them as recommendations. We don't have to necessarily follow them and change our, our statute to meet them. And I personally think we should probably zero in on those that are, one of the places where, where the professional opinion is that we are non-compliant. And I think those are, from my reading of them, and maybe we can start with others' perceptions on this, my reading of those found none of them to be particularly objectionable and mostly it's updating code sections and a lot of important but fairly tedious text changes that doesn't, wouldn't have much substantial meaning. That's my interpretation, but I guess maybe we could start with others opining on, you know, their, what they're seeing in the Berkeley Group and if you have thoughts on how you'd like to see us address the recommendations.
Well, one thing I would think it was, it would be good to be in compliance with Virginia Code and I agree with you that it's, it's kind of a, I was thinking, maybe we should hire our law students or something like this to go through it, you know, and, and get the code in compliance, because you're right, it's so tedious.
I mean, I think we have, we as a commission have at least two choices. One is to just collectively say, we support these, please do a markup and that would be the, and then kind of go from there. Or if we're not quite comfortable, we could spend some more time ourselves stepping through them together and making sure that everybody, you know, we agree. So I don't know how much people have had an opportunity to, to read them and how comfortable they are, but it sounded like you would be comfortable at least moving ahead.
I think they're gonna have to wait until the, the board's assumption is, because they'll give direction on their opinion.
Yeah, they could absolutely not. They asked us to take a certain.
So, I mean, I don't think we should necessarily start down a path that may not agree with them.
That's a good point. Again, I'll remind people, we did discuss, I think there was some consideration of starting these meetings earlier and beginning with the work session.
I think that would be good, unless we find times where there's more time.
Yeah. Personally, I feel like we've made more progress when we scheduled work sessions in the inter meeting weeks and I, I question how much more we would get done with an hour before a regular meeting in most circumstances, but we, maybe the thing to do tonight would be to at least plan a work, a work session to move to this. Would that be a subject or you, so that August third is when they're hearing?
No time.
Six to eight.
Most of the recommendations, they do point out a lot of discrepancies with the code.
Yeah.
And it's simple stuff, like we say, we've got, we give ourselves ninety days to respond or some, somebody has ninety days to respond to something while the code says sixty days. Right? There's a lot of that.
No, there's a lot of that, that's what I was thinking.
And they've been on all that. I think not one of the, the board have, but there's different opinions there, which you have Gary Curry, the county attorney, both will, will have insight into it, so definitely anything we do has to be somewhat after the August third time to give them time to, you know, put something together for a direction and their sentiments of direction.
So I think that's an excellent point. I'm just looking at a calendar, our Wednesday would be the tenth. I know that I am not available like they are, delivering my son to college, so I'm way out of town. And our next regular meeting is then the, the following Wednesday, the seventeenth. I believe. You want to just have.
Just the seventeenth, you know, you have four board and hopefully we'll have another light agenda like we did tonight.
Do you have any sense of what that agenda will be like?
Um, not at this time. I have five applications sitting on my desk waiting on VOD and health before they can come to you.
The tourist homes?
It's a little mixture of everything.
So is there any appetite to consider like the ninth or is that?
Whatever you want to do.
Well, I, I feel like these, when we have these discussions in our regular meetings, it tends to be just talking about doing something rather than doing something. I feel like we make more progress.
I agree.
Why don't we, why don't we plan to continue this meeting for that purpose on the ninth? Does anybody else know that they can't make that? Well, I think it's reasonable, we can confirm that we would have a forum, but if we said maybe the, the ninth at, you know, six p.m., is that, anyone ready to propose a different?
The ninth, the Tuesday?
Yes.
And are we proposing that at that work session, we're gonna look at the Berkeley Group thing or we're gonna also try to do sign ordinance?
Well, that is yet to be decided. You know, we, we have lots of these small moving pieces. I feel like we, personally, it frustrates me that we've kind of lost the momentum on the sign ordinance because we're having people who, you know, coming up with things and we're having a hard time remembering what we tentatively agreed to do. So I do, I feel like that is something we should probably prioritize, but that's my own personal view.
No, I agree.
And for that matter, maybe we could do that. Maybe we should have a work session before the supervisors hear the Brooklyn and do the signs. Maybe that would be, is there another day in there? Today, no, twenty, today's the twentieth. Yeah, cause that would be the Wednesday, unless we did it next week. All right, well, Mr. Whitson, when he returns me, have some suggestions. For that matter, he may have a plan that we haven't yet heard, but my view is, I, I think, I feel like we should start with the sign ordinance and see if we can make some really progress on that and then maybe talk about the Berkeley Group and we can do this a little, we can get through all the ones where we're found non-compliant. I think that would be too heavy. Just make sure that we are, you know, what we tentatively do is, so that's my vision. And then, you know, the third, item number two under old business, you know, is this event safety provision that we did start to speak about. I know there were a lot of challenges that had already been raised about some of these definitions and, you know, what if you're just going into a field and, you know, what is it all the way along the way? I think there's, I think several challenges have been identified with how that can be implemented. You know, I think we just need to keep doing these work sessions and, and try to zero in on marking these things up until, you know, so all, all of these items are hitting the same ordinances, so I think we should work on them until we're ready to, we have enough of them that we think it justifies doing the public hearing and going in with their revision. So my, my suggestion is that we have that here, that work session, we don't have to commit to which things we're gonna necessarily do now, but that that's our, that is our charge to try to get to a place where we have enough revisions to move something forward. I mean, to just be doing all the talking on this, anybody else have any thoughts on these old business items?
They've done a wonderful job, Gary.
Anybody else have anything on that?
You know, my, my only thought on the zoning ordinance having to do with the traffic is that they're, you know, if they, that it's way too broad and that we need to just turn it out, there must be another way of getting to the issue. Like for instance, if the issue was with, you know, the Washington Winery, could, you know, get the road in compliance?
Well.
That might not be the only issue that they're trying to address.
That's such a complicated thing to handle.
I know, it's really.
You think it's broad and I think it's narrow. I can't believe they put motorcycles in it. That didn't make any sense at all, maybe. Really? I, I agree with that.
Well, we also need to, maybe I can pull it up to see what exactly our charge has been. This is another one that has been kind of handed to us and supervisors, so we should perhaps remind ourselves what they asked us to do. Just gotta pull up that.
They sent down the draft language for the commission to review to decide how many, you know, how many cars, you know, the details of the language.
Yeah, that was the request, so I, I suppose we could, we could change the question. So. Yeah. Yes, they, well, I, I think it's, it's certainly stalled in its current form, I think that's safe to say. From the conversations we've had, I don't think anybody thinks this is ready for prime time, so I, I think lest anybody be concerned about that, I think that's probably less of a concern than it would otherwise be, but why don't we, we'll just have that on the agenda for that next meeting as well.
I think one of the things that the board was concerned about this was is the parking and keeping it open for emergency vehicles. It came up about a request for a wedding event. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it was actually the Slumon event application. And I know that they, two or three of the board members questioned that they did not submit a plant, a site plan, show that, that, you know, that they, they had a parking plan. You couldn't, everybody just couldn't come in and park up around the lawn, you know, then if you had a, if you had a bar or if you had an emergency or medical reasons, they, they could not get in. I know that was probably a thought, but I agree with you. It needs reviewing, you know, proper that right now.
Yeah, the board is requesting that we review and consider the number of vehicles that should be included in the provided definition below. And then there was also a request that we, that we take this language and. And then there was also a request that we, that we take this language and modify it to add a carve-out for events where there's a regular presence of emergency personnel. So I guess they tried to narrow the scope of their request, but I think we have, I think our opinions would be heard, so, yeah. Okay, well, let's, we'll talk about that when it increases in detail at that time and maybe we'll have representatives from the supervisor to make it more clear what they'd like us to do.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a little guidance as to, was there a specific scenario or an event that happened? Is there something that we're trying to protect people from or is, you know, what? I mean, I can understand that. I'm trying to think of a party that we have, but we have a separate farm entrance. All the guests go in and out a very narrow driveway and it is a problem. They can barely pass. But of course, getting shut with the rescue people up there, they're on separate entrances, so.
I recall when we did not the Schwimmer application, but after we did the Miller application, we spent a great deal of time figuring, trying to figure out how traffic would move because that's a fairly narrow way, there's some pinch points. And, you know, they were talking about pretty large numbers of people and a large wooden structure and, you know, the scenarios are, you know, pretty easy to imagine there, so. But you're right, I don't, I felt like this was more of a, let's get ahead of this business about that recording.
Well, I think if that's, if they're looking for tools, because I know the sign on this is one of the few things you could use to pinch them or whatever, I mean, you're not, you're not creating a barrier that's too hard for somebody who wants to put in a winery that will pop. And I think if that's what you're trying to chip away at, you know, I think there's better ways of doing it. It might take our board to send a letter to Richmond and say, "Hey, let's modify this coming out of Richmond" to allow us to have some say in what can pop up overnight.
Well, to be fair.
I suppose it'll just try to nitpick and bother people.
Yeah, my sense was less that this was about the original sighting of those, but more about kind of monitoring and having some control on the large, the scale of events that can be kind of made under that umbrella, because the umbrella is pretty big and broad. And I believe that is, that was the motivation for this from the conversations I've had. Anyway, I don't think we're going to act on this in any way tonight, so I think we'd care to have the last.
Or continue the meeting or adjourn the meeting?
That would be the next step to decide. I guess I'd like to call it a recommendation that we continue the meeting. But the problem with that, I suppose, is if we had to specify a date certain, and if we're not confident in that date, then maybe we should.
Do a date and then cancel it.
Okay, let's just do that then. So I'd love to entertain a motion to continue this meeting until Tuesday, August eighth to six P.M.
Fine. Tuesday, August ninth. At six P.M.
I'd rather someone else would move that.
I would, I'll move that, we continue this meeting until six P.M. on August, Tuesday, August ninth.
I'll second that.
There you have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I believe we're done for this evening.